Good evening. Welcome to the Wilmer City Council Meeting for Monday, May 7th, 2007. Roll call.
Mayor Heitke.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Swenson. Gardner.
Here.
Dacken.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlick.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Thank you, Kevin. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening to our citizens who are here in the chambers and to the citizens who are watching this meeting on cable television. Tonight we have three scheduled public hearings and then a variety of committee reports. First, I'll ask the council if they have any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda. I have a couple under miscellaneous. One is, we need to consider a change order on the interceptor project. Mr. Craig Holmes will explain what this is about. I also have a proclamation for Arbor Day. We already had our ceremony, but the proclamation needs to be read at a public meeting like this to fulfill certain requirements. And I have some other miscellaneous announcements. I also have the Housing Task Force to present to the council if they wish to consider kind of formally appointing them, or if they want to add any additional members at this point. If there's nothing else, we'll then move to the consent agenda.
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion, and it's been seconded, to approve the consent agenda. Tonight that includes the minutes of the last city council meeting on April 16th, the hospital board minutes of April 11th, the utilities commission minutes of April 23rd, the planning commission minutes of April 25th, the building inspection report for the month of April, minutes from the Convention and Visitors Bureau of March 20th, the Transit Board minutes of March 27th, and the Zoning Appeals Board minutes of April 30th. Does any council member wish to talk about anything in that consent agenda? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that's carried. We will now move to the first scheduled public hearing, and that public hearing is now open. The first hearing has to do with an ordinance authorizing the issuance of $2,155,000 in general obligation improvement bonds and the levying of taxes to secure the payment of that improvement bond series. And Mick, would you please explain this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for your consideration tonight is the issue of a competitive sale for geo-improvement bonds to finance various improvement projects throughout the city. This is the second issue that we've done. The earlier issue was for that area in southeast Wilmer, the DBI project. Unfortunately, I have to report to you tonight that we have not received from the Jay Herzog and Sons owners of the mall property what we feel are the necessary commitments in the way of signed developers' agreements to include Fifth Street in the project, which we were bonding for in this issue. That portion of Fifth Street that I'm talking about is from Wilmer Avenue South down to 19th Avenue Southeast. The developers have indicated that they're having difficulty with one of their major tenants in signing off on the project, and it has some implications with regard to their lease, and so they were not able to sign that agreement. We're hopeful that our discussions with Jay Herzog will continue, that they will continue to work with their major tenants and get the necessary releases that they need in order to move forward with signing the development agreement. But in the meantime, it would be my recommendation that the council reduce the amount of the bond sale from $2,155,000 to $1,725,000. That's a reduction of $430,000 and represents the removal of that portion of Fifth Street from the project. And we would hope to include it then in our 2008 improvement program.
All right. Thanks for explaining all that, Mick. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to ask any questions or make any comments about this issue and this proposed ordinance? Our city administrators recommending reducing the issuance from $2,155,000 down to $1,725,000. Does anybody make any comments? If not, the public hearing is closed on this matter, and now the discussion comes up to the council members. Councilmember Reese.
I'm truly disappointed. We have to wait till '08? We can't still get it done this year? Well, I wouldn't rule out that possibility. You know, everything would need to fall into place in order that we could bid the project and sell another bond issue prior to the construction season closing. It'd be very difficult, and I have no idea when we might expect to hear from Jay Herzog with regard to their negotiations with their tenants. That's the wild card.
Other council members, any comments or questions on this? Mick, is there a certain threshold of time that, you know, if they were to respond a week from now, could we still go ahead with, you know, with this, or is the threshold today? That we can't go with this project?
Well, again, I think that today isn't a drop-dead date by any means, but again, it would require them to act sooner than later in order that we might be able to go through our process of bidding the project and setting up another bond sale.
All right.
And that would have to be in a relatively short period of time.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really disappointed and a little concerned, too, if they're dealing with a major tenant, and I don't know who it is or what the issue might be, but why might we think that they'd get that resolved and this could happen? We could be in a similar situation in '08. I mean, what is our leverage? How can -- we need this road to go through. At some point in time, that road needs to go through. How do we get that done if they have ongoing problems with this tenant?
Well, we always have the option of initiating a project. And building a street that the city has determined is in the best interests of its overall transportation system, but we've always been relying on our ability to negotiate an agreement with Jay Herzog, which we did, but it was all contingent on their ability then to convince their tenants to follow suit. And, you know, I can't get into all the details of their leases with the tenants, but when you go in and disrupt the existing environment by building roads and rearranging or eliminating parking, it has an impact on their leases with their tenants, and they have certain rights when it gets to that point. If we were to see that regardless of our efforts and Jay Herzog's efforts to convince the tenants that they should cooperate and renegotiate their leases or whatever they need to do, then we likely would initiate that action for the 2008 improvement program.
Okay. Thank you.
My understanding is that the leases at the mall are real diverse, you know, that every company negotiates their own lease with Herzog, Jay Herzog, and they're on different timelines and different time schedules, and it's a very complicated situation over there.
I should point out, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, that the representatives of the businesses locally have all been in favor of the project. They all see the value of the project and how it will improve their situation. Jay Herzog has been in favor of the project from the very beginning when we started talking to them. The problem arises, in this particular case, when you're dealing with a corporate office that's somewhere on the East Coast, probably doesn't even know where Wilmer is, let alone what that particular store's role is in the overall makeup of the candy mall. So we're dealing with corporate individuals that are not familiar with the local program.
Councilmember Dacken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Dennis. Can we assume that it's parking, it's finding replacement parking places, and it's hard to imagine that would be such a difficult task?
Parking is the issue that's driving the lease disputes, and it is ironic because if you drive back there behind the mall, it's not like we're having to displace a number of vehicles with the construction activity.
Yeah. I've never seen a car parked that far east.
Yeah. But the guy in New Jersey doesn't understand that.
Okay. All right. The matter on the table then is whether the council wishes to go forward with the $1,725,000 bond. Councilmember Anderson.
I would introduce a resolution providing for the competitive sale of the $1,725,000 general obligation improvement bond, Series 2007B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the issuance of $1,725,000 general obligation improvement bonds, and then the levying of taxes to secure the payment of those bonds. Further comment from council? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How does this affect the stop-and-go lights at 19th Avenue and Fifth Street then?
Well, Mr. Fagerly, ideally, it would have been nice had we been able to have the full intersection in place. We talked about that at length today, and are convinced that we'll be able to put in a system that works for 19th Avenue and then Fifth Street south of there. We'll have enough room to install the loops and the infrastructure to finish the signal system once that Fifth Street connection is made behind the mall.
All right. Thanks.
Councilmember Dacken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Mick, are you saying that the semaphore would go up, but it would only go south of 19th Avenue? There would not be ingress, egress, north?
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
All right. Ready to vote? Roll call. Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes, the ordinance is adopted. I will now open up the second public hearing, which is the assessment hearing for the 2007 street improvement projects. I'd like to introduce Mel Odens, our city engineer, who will begin this process. Mel.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll come up here like I do for all of these hearings, and we'll address the audience. Before I start, there was handouts in the back, and there was handouts up at this front table. If anybody needs one, raise your hand, and I can get you a handout. We will be going through this handout tonight. This is the public assessment hearing. We've had an improvement hearing earlier in February, and so this is the assessment hearing. If you look at the order of the agenda, I'll briefly explain the project, and then I'll turn it back over to the mayor, and then he will go down each street, street by street, and when your street comes up, if you have a comment on it, feel free to address the council at that time. Turning the page, the position statement. "It is the position of the City of Wilmer to seek the input of all interested citizens and/or affected members of the public in the city's decision-making process. The purpose of this hearing is to review the project and explain the proposed assessments and to obtain testimony from interested parties. The authority that the city uses for the assessments or proposals in this hearing is being held under the authority of the State of Minnesota Statute, Chapter 429." The 2007 street and other improvements, project cost $6.57 million. It consists of seven projects. We had a -- the two major bid openings for this was January 22nd of this year, and that was for the five contracts in the Waterview Business Park. And then on April 10th, we had what we would consider more of the street projects, the '07, the '01 type projects. On the breakdown, you'll list, you'll see the reconstruction, you'll see new development, you'll see overlay. Starting at the reconstruction, we have street-only cost rate. A few years ago, the city council implemented a utility fee, and that covers the cost of the water and sewer assessment for residential people. Starting at the top, we have four streets in the reconstruction, 17th Avenue Southwest. I didn't include a map in here, like I did in the improvement hearing, and the total cost per foot is $53.80. Total cost is about $36,000. What we do is, we take the cost of all the reconstruction, absent the state aid street, we divide it by the assessable footage to come up with a rate at 75 percent, the city's assessment rate, 75 percent of the cost, and we apply that $53.80, which that unit cost came up to be this year, and we apply it to all the streets. 10th Street Northeast is a state aid route, municipal state aid route, which is a heavier section, but we apply the same unit cost per foot to that road as the other ones. In 2002, I just do, I do want to point out for the benefit of the public, Third Street Southeast is in here. It's a five-block section from the Junior High North. Back in 2002, it was proposed to be reconstructed, and really, there was four issues. One of them was a 30-foot street, which we've done. The second thing was to maintain boulevards as best we could, which we've done. Trees, keeping the boulevards, we do, we were able to maintain some of the trees. We still are removing a fair number of trees. Some, I believe there was nine trees removed at Dutch Elm, and then there's some other ones that are going to be marked for removal. And then keep the cost down. At the time, in 2002, we were assessing for water, sewer, and street, and now it's street-only. Under new development is the Waterview Business Park. There's five contracts, paving, underground signals, street lighting in the 19th Avenue piece. We don't have a cost per foot on that. That cost has been derived through a developer's agreement. However, the portion within the park on the Ninth Street piece, the residential piece on the Easterly part, is using the residential rate. Going down to overlay, same thing applies. We take the cost of the project divided by the assessable footage, come and take a 75 percent rate, and this year it's $17.33. On the back, item number four, we have miscellaneous projects. These are not assessed, but it's just other work for the information of the council and the public. We're going to do some airport demolition, some additional tax lane widening. We're going to be doing some walk paths on North Business 71, doing some -- we've done some crack sealing, and we'll be doing seal cult this year. If you look at the cost breakdown, the property owner's assessment amount is $788,810. The developer's assessed amount is about, is 2.48 million. There was no cash agreements this year, and the city shares a little over 3.3 million. Once again, for a total project cost of about $6.6 million. Down below that, I won't go through each one, but I do include some commonly asked questions. You can read that, and hopefully that will eliminate some questions that you may have and don't feel like you want to ask, but we'd be willing to answer any questions you may have. But one thing I do want to point out, when the work does start, just like other years, if there's underground in the project, mean water and sewer, there's 17 working days allowed to complete the work from the time it's open, which is about three and a half weeks in a month. And if there isn't underground, it's 15 working days. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor, and he can go down street by street.
Thanks, Mel. If someone wishes to comment when I get to the street that you're concerned about, please come up to the podium and give your name and your street address. This is all on tape, and it's for the public record. Mel, just one question before I start going through this list. Does this total amount include the mall road? $900,000 for the --
I'm sorry, yes, it does, sir.
So is the total amount reduced by $900,000?
We would take $901,000 out of there.
Okay, so it'd be closer then to about $5.7 million, somewhere in that range? Okay.
We need to take action, Mr. Mayor, to pull the road out of the improvement.
To pull it out of the improvement? I want to get this up to the council. Okay. We're still in the public hearing process. Is there anyone who wishes to say anything about 17th Avenue Southwest? Or ask any questions? Anybody? All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Would you like staff comments on a road at this time, or wait after you close the hearing? We have some comments on that.
On 17th Avenue? Or on all the roads?
17th.
Why don't you say now, in case it stirs up a question from the audience?
Okay. We've, I have talked to most of the owners on that, and as you know, 17th Avenue Southwest is a small cul-de-sac that heads Easterly off of Sixth Street Southwest. And because of its shortness, there's a limited number of parcels that this assessment goes to. And being irregular lots, we do not follow the length of their lineal footage like other lots, because on the circle there, somewhere between 34 and 40 feet. What we do is, we come down one side on the length on the side yard of the corner person who's probably is against Sixth Street Southwest, and that's where their assessment is. We take the lineal footage all around the cul-de-sac and then go back up to Sixth Street. Then we divide that by the parcels, only four. And that really has put the cost of that assessment, the cost of that street construction, a little higher than the average. That mathematically became a 93.32 feet from many of them that were 47, 45, and so forth. Staff's recommending that we probably reduce that by the neighborhood average and bring that more in line with the rest. The neighborhood average for that street is 80.19 feet without those lots, then it's like 79.52 with those small lots added into it. So it would be a reduction somewhere down to around 80 feet from the 93.32, bringing it more in line. So that's for your consideration after all testimony is taken.
All right. Thanks. Again, any comments on 17th Avenue Southwest? Then we'll go to Sixth Street Southwest. Anybody wish to say something? 10th Street Northeast. Any comments or questions about that? Third Street Southeast.
It's your street, isn't it? Good.
I'm going to be quiet.
All right. That's Mr. Dacken's street. Anybody from the audience want to talk about Third Street Southeast? All right. Then in the new development, anybody want to ask anything about, or say anything about Waterview Business Park in any of these categories, paving, underground, signals, street, or 19th Avenue Southeast? Okay? Come up forward, please. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Roger Justin. I'm from the Rinkin Noonan Law Firm in St. Cloud, and I'm here representing ODP Investments as a Candy Entertainment Center. I'd like to provide the mayor with our objection to the assessment. For the two parcels that are involved, the assessments are approximately neighborhood of $100,000. And mainly what I want to point out, and what I did in the letter for the council members who do not have that in front of them, is that part of what has been discussed is the fairness and how the various costs are divided between the properties, but our position is that you also have to have a benefit to the property itself. And if the benefit to the property from the construction does not at least equal the increase in value, you can't do it. And our position is that that entertainment center and that business is served adequately by what's already in there, that the road that they have is a five-lane road, and they'll be a five-lane road, that the new construction is not benefiting that property with the controlled intersection at Fifth and 19th. It's actually going to make it more difficult to enter their business, where previously or right now, currently, there are two entrances into the business off 19th. One of those entrances is proposed to be deleted, and there'll only be one, which will essentially, if there's heavy traffic in that area, become blocked because of the right turn lane onto Fifth. So we don't believe that's a benefit at all. In addition to that, Mr. Patterson is going to testify just after me, that the construction in the area has actually caused flooding on the property. It's approximately 9.3 acres that they own, and as you went out there this spring, and currently, water is pooling at the southeast corner of that property where it never had previously. Whereas it used to drain out, the new construction has caused it to dam up, and we believe that there was approximately four acres of the property that was underwater this spring. And you can't say that if you're taking 44 percent of the property and putting it underwater, where development in it, any kind, is going to be impossible, that's adding value to the property. And they've had some estimates as to what it would take to build that up so that it's up to grade with the road and now the surrounding property, and you're talking over half a million dollars to do that. So far from this being a benefit to the property, this construction, we believe is actually a detriment, and that the assessments for those are therefore improper. And for that reason, we're objecting to those.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Justin.
And then Mr. Patterson had something to add.
Keith. Welcome, Keith.
Welcome. I just, I gave, I've got some --
Keith, for the record.
Oh, for the record, Keith Patterson, representing Candy Entertainment Center, 500 Southeast, 19th Avenue. I've got some copies of pictures. I've dropped off copies of this to Mel Odens. I can drop these up. These are just black and white. Mel actually has a CD if you would like copies in color of the pictures. They represent some of the damage to the property that we've had caused by the construction and what's going on. First, I'm going to go access, we're still waiting, they were blocking off 19th Avenue, and they were supposed to improve the access across the gravel lot for us. We're still awaiting that. It's a good thing they haven't blocked off our entrances yet, because the access that we're supposed to be using for access to our property has been blocked, two out of the five days last week by boring equipment doing construction work. So I'm starting to wonder the possibility if we will have complete access to our property during the construction phase, or are we going to have temporary days? during the construction phase, or are we going to have temporary days where we don't have any access to our property at all, when you're only knocking us down to one access to our property? In regards to the back of our property, the water, as we've come into the city council since 2005, when this project has started, they're actually blocking off the drainage of that property, and they've raised it. With the water, the flooding of water has come within 65 feet of our building in that three-inch rain, which wasn't a real major rain. I'm afraid that if we get a real heavy rain, we could be addressing flooding problems in our building, because there's not much of a slope to the property behind our building. It's, you know, a four- or five-inch additional water impounding will actually be coming up to our building, the back of the building. The other thing is, you know, there, because it is flooded ground now, it's becoming a mosquito breeding ground, and we do have an outdoor deck that we have volleyball, and it's going to impinge upon our volleyball players playing volleyball out there this year, because they aren't going to be able to enjoy that deck as much, because they're going to be infested with mosquitoes a lot more. Just something to consider. Along the front of our property, there's a picture of our drain in our, it'd be the northeast corner of our parking lot. They cut our drainage tile that drained our parking lot and doing the interceptor sewer line. They were supposed to splice it back together again. Since they have done the interceptor sewer line, that drain has not worked. If you look at the pictures, there is actually a sinkhole created around the drain where our parking lot is caving in around the drain, and the drain is not working, so I'm wondering where that water is going. It's either going and causing further damage below our parking lot and property, or it's actually dumping right into the 5th Street, right by the interceptor sewer line where they actually cut the drain tile. And whether that may be causing more problems further on is something that will have to be addressed. As a far, in regards to the back, our back property where the flooding is, right now, we are looking at the bids I've got to improve that, bring that up to grade, you know, are costing about $4.65 a square foot. Now, the current resale value of that property is only about $3 a square foot, is what I'm understanding, is what the property is going at now. So you're talking about the cost to improve it is 50% higher than what you're going to get resale, so therefore, it's pretty much non-developable land at this time, unless the property values come up. So I guess that's the majority of the comments I've got. If anybody has any questions in regards to the pictures that I've got, or...
I think the council may have some questions.
Okay.
So don't leave. Does anybody else wish to make any comments about the Waterview Business Park development or the effects of it? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jason Versteg. I'm with Dunick Brothers, the developer on this project. I actually live in Princeburg. My address is PO Box 213, Princeburg. Since receiving the assessment notice for this project, we have reviewed it quite extensively, and basically, the way we've reviewed these assessments have been comparing it to the provisions of the developer's agreement that we signed with the city. And we want to make sure that we are perfectly in line to, for the benefit of both the city and Dunick Brothers. In doing so, we've had many discussions, or several discussions with city staff, and there has been some changes back and forth. And I think right now, actually, we're giving a net amount to the city right now compared to what the original number was. So for the most part now, we believe that the assessments are pretty close in line with the developer's agreement, with the exception of two items. And I just wanted to bring those two things up right now. And the first item was on the issue of professional services, and this was information that was actually provided to us by the city upon our request. And the professional services are broken into several different parts. And the first part that's already been spent was the design, and also there was some hydraulic, the design was done by Bolton &amp; Mink. There was some hydraulic modeling done by Bar Engineering. Some signals design done by S.E.H. We're not disputing those. They are in line with the developer agreement. However, the construction, they call it construction engineering services, and as I understand, these would be done by Bolton &amp; Mink as well. They'd include services such as staking, construction inspection, that, those type of things that go on during construction. And for this project, based on the information we've been given from the city, these costs come to about $220,000 total for the project, of which, by my calculations, you know, Dunick would be responsible for about half of that. It's, based on the size of this project, we don't think that the construction services is going to take near $220,000 for this project. And so our question, I guess, is, our question to the staff has been, well, if that money is not used, which we don't think it's going to be, do we still, is it still going to go against the assessments? Not just to Dunick, but to the city as well. And the answer was yes. You know, once those, once the assessments are basically approved, and maybe tweaked a little bit this week yet, that's the number. So that's one of the issues. And then the other one is somewhat related, and as I understand, this is more of contingency issue, and this comes from the budget worksheet, and it's line 39, called Other Services. And for the paving project, it was a total of $37,700. And for the underground project, I'm sorry, I got that mixed up. For the underground project, it was $37,700. For the paving project, it was $150,000. And as we understand, that's basically a contingency fund, in case there's change orders, that type of thing on the project. Those would help to cover that. Our contention is, once again, since we were the contractor and the developer, we've basically had control of the subgrade to this point, and will until it's paved, at which time, again, we're the contractor on the paving project too, and we don't think there's that risk of change orders, especially on the paving project of $150,000. We don't see where that risk is. And once again, if it's not going to be spent, we're still going to be charged for it based on the assessments. Not only us, but, you know, I guess the way it's set up, probably the city too. And so I guess my, there's maybe a couple options on a way to deal with this. One of them would be to table this for another two weeks or something, till we can get those issues worked out with the city staff. And I don't know if that would be an option for you, but maybe the other way, in talking with your staff, that you could probably direct them to revisit this, these two particular issues. And things could be worked out before, I guess it's this Friday, would kind of be the drop dead date, that we'd have to have everything worked out. So that would probably be an option too. I guess that's up to you to decide, but I believe that's everything that I would have.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments about Waterview Business Development? Good evening.
Hi. I'm Chris Dunick, 3502 Eagle Ridge Drive West. And just adding on to what Jason was talking about a little bit earlier, one of the things that we really want you to consider is, is that contingency fee of 5% is, under normal circumstances, that would be somewhat of a reasonable number. But when the project gets to be this large, a large dollar project with a 5% turns out to be a large premium to pay for risk that we certainly feel the city is not going to be exposed to as much risk in this situation, where the developer is doing the construction, has been responsible for the construction to this point. And then as we go forward, the amount of risk there should be decreased significantly. So what we're asking is if you would reconsider, or give us the opportunity to sit down with city staff and work on that contingency issue.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? I want to read into the public record this letter that was just handed to me by Mr. Justin, so that all the council members know what's in the letter, and it should be on the public record. The letter is addressed to Mr. Halliday. This, Dear Mr. Halliday, this letter is written in response to the City of Wilmer's letters to ODP Investments dated April 16, 2007. ODP Investments was given notice that it was to be assessed for improvements related to project number 0701, 0703, and 0704 on land identified as owned by ODP Properties. He lists the parcel numbers here also. "ODP Investments objects to the proposed assessments to be placed on these parcels. Please accept this letter as ODP's written objection to the proposed assessment pursuant to Minnesota statute," and he quotes the number. "Our objection is based on the fact that the proposed improvements do nothing to benefit these properties. The properties already have more than adequate access off 19th Avenue. In fact, 19th Avenue currently provides two driveways into the Candy Entertainment Center parking lot. The proposed new access is not nearly as desirable. The city is proposing only one driveway, which no doubt on occasion will be blocked by cars backed up at the newly constructed controlled intersection at 19th Avenue and 5th Street. This is an issue which was never a problem before. Additionally, the services to be put in with the road construction do nothing to add value to the property. The services currently in place adequately serve the properties, and no upgrades of any fashion are necessary. In addition to the above noted concerns, it appears that the construction project as a whole has in effect diminished the value of ODP's properties, not increased it. Construction of 5th Street has impacted the drainage of these parcels of land, whereas previously, the land drained to the southeast and the water moved quickly off the property. The improvements act like a dam, and large portions of the property have become unstable because it's underwater. Far from that being a benefit to the property, the project appears to have worked at taking ODP's property, therefore greatly diminishing its value. This list is not meant to be exhaustive of all reasons for the objections, and we reserve the right to amend and add any other objections as they become appropriate." ODP will be represented by Mr. Roger Justin of the Rinkin Noonan Law Firm. He gives his address, and it says, "Direct any correspondence or questions to him." That's the letter that was just handed to me. Any other comments on Waterview Business Park? All right. The next issue is the overlay projects on 19th Avenue Southeast. Any comment about that? Then Country Club Drive, you wanted to make a comment? You have to come up to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening. Tim Starkenberg. I'm representing my in-laws, Gary and Bonnie Grund, who live at 1307 19th Ave., Southeast.
Tim, what's your last name?
Starkenberg.
Starkenberg. Okay, thank you.
Looking at the overlay of 19th Avenue Southeast, we've been kind of examining the road, and it looks in fairly good shape yet. After we found out about this project and the assessments that we're going to be charged to that, we feel like the road overlay project is being done for the primary purpose of improving traffic into the Walmart development area or the Waterview Business Park. And a few of the residents on this street were feeling like this project, if the street is improved, it's only going to increase speeds down that road with the increased traffic from the Waterview Business Park, that it would actually affect their housing values and decrease that because of the increased traffic. Already, it's very hard to back out of driveways on this road, children playing out there. There have been numerous incidences where they've almost been hit from traffic. And so this increased traffic on this road is going to be very detrimental to the homeowners that are there. And so feeling like now they're going to be charged for an improvement to the road that's only going to decrease their property values was a bit on the unfair side, and perhaps these assessments should be better off charged to the property who's going to be benefiting from this, which would be the Waterview Business Park. I guess that's just the feeling that several of the residents on 19th Avenue have had, that this project is just going to be very detrimental to the neighborhood, decrease the property values, increase the risk to children, and they're going to be charged for it.
Tim, let me just clarify, when you say the residents, are you talking about 19th Avenue east of this development area?
Yes.
As it kind of makes that curve and goes up a little bit of a...
Yeah, down, past the S curve, all the way down to Lakeland there.
Do you have sidewalks in that area of the city?
Yes.
On both sides of the street?
I know that they're on the one side for sure. Yeah, just on the north side, I believe. So, but I live on Dana Drive, which is just right off the corner in the middle of the S curve there, too, on 19th Ave., and I have a lot of kids. And when they're out there playing, those cars just whip off of 19th Ave., and, you know, I'm not being charged the assessments, because I guess I'm on Dana Drive versus 19th Ave., even though my house pretty much faces that. But, you know, the danger is there for my kids. I just see how fast the cars go. And having a road that's in, you know, great condition is only going to increase that, it's not going to decrease that. Driving down the road, I've never had any problems with the road itself, but I know that there's several other city streets that are in disrepair that could really use a resurfacing project, much more than 19th Ave., needs it for the residents that live in that area.
I'd like, before we walk away, Mel, is there a rationale for why 19th Avenue is being scheduled for overlay at this time?
It's been on the list. This is the second year it was on the list. It's been, it's 15 years old, and anywhere between 15 and 18 years, you should have an overlay. And it was a staff recommendation that in the condition, you know, you let it go too much longer, and you're going to be in the condition of having to consider reconstruction and just let it go. And so what we're trying to do is we try to use engineering judgment to save them and do an overlay, which is a substantial cheaper cost than a reconstruction.
And with the overlay, what do you project, how does that extend the life of the street?
Hopefully another 15 to 20 years.
See, I just look at other streets, like even, you know, Dana Drive, you know, where I live, the street is in much worse condition than what you see on 19th Ave. There, I just feel like that maybe this project is being hurried along purely for the Waterview Business Park development.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Does anybody else wish to come in on 19th Avenue Southeast? Country Club Drive. Good evening. Dave?
Good evening, Mayor. My name is David Herser. I live at 1501 Country Club Drive. My questions were principally answered with the engineer's presentation and his information sheet, except for one that I have thought of since then. I understand that there's a special method of assessment computation when it comes to cul-de-sacs and unusual-shaped lots. My frontage is about probably 30 feet, so in order for me not to take advantage of the situation, they have a different formula. And my remaining question is, on the cul-de-sac, there's an entrance to a park, which I believe is a city park, and I'm curious as to whether that entrance is a lot or merely an easement, because if it was a lot, it should be part of the divisor of the formula to determine the individual assessments.
I think the staff are trying to...
But while we researched that question, I would like to take this opportunity to express the opposite of what you've been hearing. Our street is in bad need of milling and overlay, and I think I'd like to give congratulations to the council and the city engineer for having the resourcefulness to be able to find a way to repave this street without raising the gas tax.
Cabineter Mel, do you want to comment on that cul-de-sac question?
I cannot tell from the map. It appears to be an easement, and so we're using the full lineal footage of the cul-de-sac on the southern and west end of Country Club Drive. But it's right at the edge of the map, can't see the park even on it, so I can't give you an answer.
I would assume that if subsequently you determine it is actually a lot, and therefore the number of lots changes to divide into the money, that the City of Wilmer would get the opportunity to also share in the assessment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dave. Mel, or could you look into that further and call Mr. Herser? All right. Dave, they'll give you a call.
Thank you.
Anyone else on Country Club Drive? Now we're down to the miscellaneous areas. Does anybody wish to make any comments about the airport demolition?
Those aren't assessments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. But I thought maybe somebody might have a question, that's all.
There's no assessments, so they're...
So we don't have to deal with that? That's all our costs. All right. Okay, anything else before I close the hearing and bring it up to the council for their questions and discussion? Uh, this gentleman on the right over, did you want to say something tonight, or? And how about the people in the back? Did you want to say something? Anybody? All right. Then I will close the public hearing at this time, and now the matter comes up here to the council tables. Table. Council members? Doug, do you want to say something?
Well, I'm looking at the staff's recommendation, first of all, on 17th Avenue Southwest, and the average that was given was 93.32, but yet extending that and a higher consideration to the, the lots around in the, the whole area is what I'm understanding, is what's bringing it down to the 80.19 rather than the policy that we've been doing with the adjacent properties down the street. You're, you're taking a, a neighborhood average, a whole neighborhood. Is that what I'm understanding?
And they have such an irregular scenario. The best solution sometimes is to take the complete project, and I'm looking at 6th Street Southwest and 17th Avenue Southwest together as that one project. And with that, it would, the, the actual, including the smaller lots of the cul-de-sac, the average is 79.85.
So all the lots on those two streets, the average is 80.19?
No, it's, it was 80.19 if I didn't include the small little parcels of the cul-de-sac, which are 45.9, 45.1 feet, those smaller. When you add all the lots in of 17th with 6th Street, divided by the lots, it's 79.85.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, 79.85. So staff's recommendation is that we go to the 79.85? Is that... To be more fair about it?
To be more fair about it.
Well, I guess I can make that motion now, Mr. Mayor, and I would move to, uh, adjust all of those assessments to the average of 79.85 then on that, on those lots.
Uh, we have a motion, and this will not be the only motion, but we have a motion and a second to adjust the...
To, what's it called, Doug? Well, it, it's to the 6th Street and 17th Avenue Lot Size Averages. That's what I'm hearing, right?
Okay, to adjust it to $79.85.
No, 79... Feet, 79.85 feet.
79.85 feet to adjust the, the size of the lots. All right. Any other comments about that? Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Other comments from the council members? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request of, uh, staff to help me, uh, understand a little better some of the, uh, uh, issues that Mr. Verstig and, uh, Mr. Dunick brought up in the, uh, in terms of, uh, those concerns.
The professional services...
Professional services and the construction, engineering services and the contingency.
Did you want to do that under, or did you want to get, go through 10th and 3rd?
Oh, sure. Were there any other comments on 10th Street or 3rd Street? All right, then let's go to Mr. Gardner's concerns. They're asking for some consideration on the contingency fund and professional services fund. What's your comment on that, Mel?
Well, specifically, what we've done, we have got five contracts in the Waterview Business Park, and we got estimates for design services, which is complete, and estimates for construction services to include in the cost of the project. It's based on a number of people for so many days for the duration of the project. That's how the, the basis, if I recall correctly, of the construction engineering is based. That number came in at, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of $440,000. The amount that's being assessed to the Waterview Business Park is just in the neighborhood of $220,000 or just right at 50% of the total engineering services. The question that they have is if all of the construction engineering services aren't used, is there some way that they can realize that savings? I guess my comment on this process is the, through the assessment process, it's an estimate. It's based on good engineering, uh, and it's as good an estimate as we can come up. We don't know what the cost is going to be for engineering. So that's how the engineering was derived at, that's how it was included in the assessment, and that's our recommendation.
Steve?
Uh, and can you, uh, help me, uh, understand their concern regarding the contingency as well?
The contingency, in some respects, is developed the same way. We've got five projects, and then within each project, um, to when you develop a budget, when you sell bonds, you need to do an, an engineering estimate on what the project's going to cost. It's not unusual to include some dollars for contingency for, uh, maybe change orders or contingencies for costs that you may not have thought of prior to any work being started. Not necessarily contingencies, um, even if professional services go over or if, uh, whatever goes over, staking or, you know, any, any type of cost. Once again, uh, the total cost for the park, um, is in the neighborhood of $300,000. $81,000 of that is on 19th Avenue, which is 100% the city, so you're left with about $220,000. And once again, through the formula, um, their exposure is $119,000 on five projects, 4.4 million. I guess it's my recommendation that that's a good number.
Thank you.
Questions? Councilmember Anderson, then I'll come to you, Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mel, just as a follow-up to both those things, would, would, so what you're saying is that it's your understanding and your interpretation then of the developer's agreement? That we're pretty much following that? Or are we, or, or not? Or is that, wasn't that not necessarily, uh, even mentioned in the developer's agreement?
The developer's agreement doesn't address on how much you're supposed to put in for a contingency or unknown costs in whatever that might be. So that's based on, um, a judgment that we feel is, is a comfortable amount for this larger project. We don't know what that's going to be. We didn't know what it was going to be before we let this project.
Well, and I, and I certainly agree, we need, we need to have some sort of a contingency fund, because who knows what that might be? I guess it, it concerns me a little bit, maybe, if we don't spend it all. You know, what happens to that money? But I guess you could look, on the other hand, and maybe we overspent in some other areas perhaps or something, so you don't necessarily charge your refund on a line item basis, I think is maybe the justification. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Reese?
My question is just simply to understand this a little better, because you just said that we've got five projects, it's $440,000 of engineering services, and $220,000 goes, is the estimate for Waterview Business Park. Uh, when Mr. Dunick and Mr. Verstig were up there, they said that, uh, the underground was $37,700 and the paving was $150,000. That's $187,700. Am I, can you help me understand that a little bit?
I guess I'm going off the numbers that we included in the assessments.
So that, I guess maybe my question has to be to Jason, then. Where did you come up with 37.7 and the 150? Jason, you want to answer that?
Can you address that? Sure. Recall, there's two different issues. Uh, one was the one you were just referring to, $150,000 and the 37.7. And those numbers came, uh, directly off the budget for the project. Uh, the top says resolution number, uh, and this is as, budget project number 0603, Waterview Business Park Underground Utilities, and has estimated total cost of the project. And it has, uh, 1 through 49, um...
Yeah, we adopted this.
Breakdown of, of all the costs that went into that project. And, uh, where the $150,000 and the 37.7 came was in line 39, under the, the big heading "Other Services," and actually 39 is also called "Other Services." So it's "Other Services" under "Other Services." And that's where, uh, that 187, 150 and, and 37.7 came in. And as, as we've been told, or as we understand, uh, that's essentially a contingency fund, wherever those costs might go, uh, cost overruns, uh, change orders, that type of thing. And that was the one area where we were, um, concerned about. And then the other one has to do with, uh, line, um, uh, line 46 on those two projects. Um, for, for the underground utilities, it was $210,000. And, um, on the paving project, uh, 0703, it was $100,000.
Okay, I, I got it now. I'm, I'm sorry, my notes, and I've got the 220 that you brought up in construction engineering services, staking and inspection.
Right, and two, the 220 came out of that 310, well, it's actually, if you, if you add all five projects together, it comes up to $440,000. The only part that we're concerned about is the construction engineering part of that that was $220,000. And then furthermore, we're not really concerned about the 19th Avenue part of it, so we're really only concerned about project 0603 and project 0703, which we are being assessed for. City might be concerned about 19th, but, you know, that's beyond our concerns, so...
Thanks. Councilmember Swenson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if that contingency fund wasn't there, if there were overages, who's liable? Who's responsible? Because it needs to be there, but you're saying, being you're the developer and the contractor, it's unnecessary. Who's liable?
I'm not saying that there maybe shouldn't be something there, but we think the risk is considerably less on a project such as this, for several reasons that we've enumerated already. One being, we're the contractor and the developer, so we're controlling that grade. We're also the contractor that's going to be doing the paving, so...
Does the city...
Plus the size of this project, in compared to your normal project, um, we don't think warrants the same percentage of, of these services as, as a normal project would. And that's based on our...
Is it the city the bottom line?
What's that?
Are we liable as a city?
Well, I, I don't know that anybody, I think the, the risk to the city and to the developer would be less, in, in, in our mind, I guess. You know, we, we do this type of work, we do a lot of staking services, and, uh, and we work with inspectors all the time, and we, we know what these... What these costs generally are. This seems excessive for a project like this.
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to go back to Mel if I could, um, because I'm hearing, uh, Mr. Verstig talk about a contingency of 187.7, and I thought I heard a different figure from you that was considerably less. Are we talking about the same thing?
Well, my numbers show $220,800.
Okay.
And when we say contingency, "other services" is a line that we use for contingencies or unknowns within the project. We feel comfortable with that number.
But your number is, I mean, I mean, there, is, is it the 187.7? I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out which, I'm trying to understand which numbers we're talking about. Pardon?
We, both parties got to 440 financially.
We're talking about two different things here. First of all, 187.7, that's, that's, uh, that's related to line 39 on, on this document, which I believe is official document that UKZ use, um, on projects 0603 and projects 0703, uh, the underground utilities and the paving. So it'd be line 39 in both of the, both of those added together. One's 150 and the other is 37.7. But 220 now is, that's line 46, and you're not going to find that 440 in line 46, because 440 is, is all the professional services for all five projects. The portion due to these... The portion of the professional services due to construction services, construction engineering services, that's where we get to 220,000. So that is, 220,000 is a different number we're talking about than the, than the 187.7. So, total, it's 220 and 187. It's, it's additive.
They're only used in two budgets. There's, there's also signal system budget, which adds some. There's also a street lighting budget that adds some. When you add all those up, it's $220,800.
That's, that's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I want to talk about, are we done talking about, uh, uh, what the rest have talked about?
Are we?
Are you done with that? I want to talk about, uh, I want to talk about something else with the...
Go ahead.
The KEC.
Go ahead.
Mr. Justin, Mr. Patterson, uh, talked about it, and they said that they, they asked what's their benefit, and that, uh, the benefit has to be at least equal to what they're paying. Can, can someone tell me, are they in fact getting that benefit?
Well, the basic principle of, um, any assessment program is exactly that. That the, the, there is a like benefit derived from the improvement.
They said that they're losing one entrance, it's going to make it more difficult. They have two entrances now, they're going to go to one. Uh, the right turn lane is going to, um, block their ingress egress at some point in time. So the benefit is there? Is that what I'm hearing?
Just explain the access.
Well, let, uh, let me explain, there's, what we've got, if, from what I heard, is really two concerns. The benefit off the, the area, the road to the east, the 5th Street piece, and then the work that's done on 19th Avenue as a result of the Waterview Business Park. If you recall, the Waterview Business Park, um, was required to do a, a portion of 19th Avenue in order to have approval for where 5th Street is. So there's two different issues here at play.
Okay.
One of the approvals that was made back when the 5th Street alignment was settled was that the access to the corner lot, which is right on the corner of 5th and 19th Avenue, would be, part of the approval would that be, that would be, have to be eliminated, because it's literally within 25 feet of the intersection and it's signalized. So that, um, one could say... So, that, one could say that that's a detriment. One could say that it, it's a non-issue, because it may be hard to use if you left it there. They still will have access to their project. The other thing to keep in mind, as a mitigating factor to that, they were given an access off of Fifth Street on the east side, on the new, and that was a mitigating factor, what we felt, to eliminating the access off of 19th Avenue.
The loss of one on 19th.
And we gave them one on Fifth.
Okay. How about the water issue? They talked about four acres of the 9.3 acres being underwater. Is that going to be resolved? I mean, how do we resolve? We have all that, all those, we have, what, a 10-acre regional pond behind them, and we have, what, two or three up front? Why would that water not have gone into one of those two or three holding ponds?
One thing to keep in mind is that the city hasn't done any work out here yet. It's the developer that blocked the water. We have not blocked the water. They, they had correspondence early, last, late summer, early fall, that they corrected that. That was brought to the developer's attention last year. And they were told that, that it was, that drainage was not blocked, and it was to the ditch. When we were putting the plans together for the underground, that we have done underground, don't get me wrong, okay? We've not done any grading or anything. We've done underground work, sewer and water. We stubbed storm sewer, or the plan stubbed a storm sewer outlet into this parcel to drain this piece, which has been in the plans, which was talked about at the improvement hearing, and has been talked about to the owners.
So, you're saying in the future, then, this should not be an issue? Because at one point, he indicates that at, at one point in time, the water came within 65 feet of the building. And the pictures are fairly revealing and demonstrate that situation. So, that's going to be resolved?
Would not. Work was, the storm sewer was, was not able to be put in last fall, and that would have drained this area along, as well as Fifth Street and 24th Avenue.
Okay. Thank you.
Mel, when is that storm drain going to be put in, then? That will resolve this?
We're hoping that they'll get, be able to resume that work soon.
So, this season?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
This summer?
Even maybe within the next six weeks.
Okay. And you're saying that that would resolve this pond problem?
Theoretically, yes. Yeah, we stubbed out storm sewer to, to this area.
All right. Any other council members have any comments here? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask Craig if I could. There was a concern brought up by the gentleman regarding something having to do with one of their drains in their parking lot, and I was wondering if, and I was wondering if you could address that.
Craig, introduce yourself, please.
My name is Craig Holmes. I'm the program manager for the wastewater relocation project. Councilmember Gardner? We do have construction records of a drain tile being disturbed last summer. My records, I thought, had indicated that was repaired, but not being sure, I put that on the contractor's list of items to be done before project completion. So, when that contractor returns to resume work toward the end of June, we will have that verified. They've got to verify that, and there's another storm lead that has to be verified before they continue.
And what about this, what they, what they show that they, that they maintain is, is damage caused by that? Is that something that is-
That's not likely the cause of a blocked drain downstream, but I'll have to investigate when the contractor's back on site.
So, you just look into it?
We'll flood it and make sure the drain is open, and then we'll have to determine what to do with that.
Fair enough. Thank you.
I have a general question. If, if there has been a problem with water seeping underground because it's not draining properly and it, and it damages their parking lot, who's responsible for that if it's cutting away soil under the parking area? Who's responsible for that?
Mr. Mayor, we would have to review that on case-by-case basis. Once again, the construction has started on 19th Avenue. We are, once again, adding storm sewer in this area, and we'll also be looking into this tile.
All right. Thank you, Mel. Councilmembers, anything else?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, did we deal with the Fifth Street Southeast, the Mall Road?
No, we haven't.
Wasn't that an item that we needed to remove from the-
We haven't dealt with that.
Improvements?
Do you want to make a motion or something?
I'll make a motion that we improve, remove Fifth Street Southeast or the Mall Road from the improvement project.
Second. We have a motion and a second to remove the Fifth Street project behind the Canyon Entertainment Mall. Further comment about that?
It should be a resolution, Mr. Mayor, so you do a roll call.
So, move.
I think that's understood by the maker of the motion, the seconded. Anybody comment on that? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Counsel, we still have to, still have some work to do here, yes? Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have another question on the overlay, and it deals with 19th Avenue Southeast. Is that, Mel, I know you said this is the second year we've dealt with that. Are there other sections that are as bad or worse? I mean, help me understand why this got put on there. I mean, are there other pieces that need overlay, as the gentleman talked about?
19th Avenue? Or other areas within the city of Wilmer?
Overlay, 19th Avenue Southeast.
You're asking if there are other areas that we should be in doing overlay work?
Exactly, right.
Well, I'm sure there are, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, but we try to prioritize based on street conditions and the timing of other improvement projects and when a street was first constructed. I know that these assessment hearings oftentimes become improvement hearings and vice versa, but we did have an improvement hearing earlier this year, and the overlay of Ninth Street was not an issue at the time, and therefore, the city council ordered the improvement. To go back and revisit that now at the assessment hearing, it would be difficult to go into other areas, because we'd be required to go through a similar process that we've gone through for 19th Avenue, including improvement hearing and assessment hearing.
Now, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just saying that it is one of the, it is a high priority for overlay.
Yes.
In your mind's eye. Okay? Thank you.
Councilmember Reese?
Mr. Mayor, I, with consideration to the changes that we've already made through motions, I would introduce a resolution to adopt the assessment role with those changes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the assessment role with the changes that the council has already voted on. Further comment about that, about this motion to adopt the assessment role? This is a resolution? Councilmember DeBlick?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if, if we have dealt with or addressed, really addressed the concerns of the, of the developers, as far as the development costs and those issues that were raised, or if there is any, any adjustments or things that can be done in that, in that menu.
Do you want to make any, Kevin? I'm sorry.
Maybe I can make some comments to maybe understand why we're here and it's a concern. Generally, before this, developer projects were a pay-as-you-go or cash development. So, sometimes when you'd have construction engineering services from an outside firm, you'd set the dollar amount. Maybe it would be low. If that was expended, you would then tell the developer, it is more cost, give us more money to cover these costs. Lately, we've had a kind of a change in the program where the development is, the developers are asking to use the bonding process to front the money and then pay it over 10 years on the assessments. So, staff has to put a value for construction engineering services into the process, because you have to set assessments on each parcel in the development, adopt the assessment role, and send that off to the bonding process. The problem we get here is if we need staff to set the dollar amount that we feel is reasonable, and when there's $220,800 set for that, if it's reasonable and expended, there's no issue here. If you spend $100,000 and put 220 into the assessment division of the parcels, certainly there's an issue. But because the developer chooses the bonding process, that puts us in this new position that we haven't been in before. So, again, if, if staff is making those estimates and they're accurate, there is no issue. So, it's, it's tough to say what is right. You know, we, we have to rely on staff to do that. We can certainly understand their concerns if we don't spend that. If we spend all of that, there is no concern. So, unless there's a different process of rebating, these assessments will be on the lots, and before all those bills would be in, which might be at the end of 2008, when everything is concluded, some of those lots may even be sold, and so the assessments have to be placed against it. Kind of a catch-22. So, I don't know if that added any clarity, but that's why we're here now. We weren't bonding for these developments like we are now.
I think, I think Councilmember Swenson asked a good question about who is liable if, if the contingency fee isn't high enough? You know, if it was reduced and then it was later found not to be high enough, who is responsible, then?
Well, in any project that the, the city might award, if there aren't sufficient revenues to cover the cost because of change orders, for example, then we would have to come up with those, those dollars. Or we couldn't deal with the change orders to the contracts.
We being the city would have to come up with that.
The city awarded the contract. This case would be somewhat unique. I suppose the contractor could say, well, that's okay. We might have to do this extra work, but we don't want any money for it. I haven't had that experience very often.
All right. Any other comments before the council votes on the resolution? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mel, we will be in constant contact with the Pattersons and KEC, daily, weekly, whatever, to make sure that they're, they can access their properties during the whole course of this construction.
We have been in contact with the Pattersons on a regular basis.
I know that. I just wanted to make sure that they get treated specially so they don't lose customers and customer base, so. I have all the confidence that you guys will do that.
Anything else? All right. The motion's on the table, and it's been seconded. A resolution. Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. Thank you for your comments. We'll go to the third public hearing, which is now open, and that's to deal with an ordinance to rezone certain property from GI, Government Institutional, to R2, which is one and two-family residential, a project called First Stop Incorporated. Bruce Peterson, would you explain that?
Mayor Hakey, members of the council, the name of the business that we're dealing with is First Step instead of First Stop. There's a typo on the agenda. First Step Inc. of Wilmer has proposed rezoning the former Lafayette School property from a GI, which is a government institutional designation, to an R2, one and two-family residential classification for purposes of operating a daycare center. The planning commission has conducted a public hearing on this matter and received very minimal comment from the public. It's a recommendation of staff that the ordinance rezoning the site be adopted, assigned a number, and published.
Thank you, Bruce. Does anyone in the audience wish to comment about this proposed ordinance to rezone the old Lafayette School? If not, the public hearing is closed. Councilmembers?
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, I drive by this property, you know, quite frequently, being in the north side, and I think this is a great use of the property, and I think this is something that we really, really need to move forward to and forward with and make a good use out of that property up there, that old school. So, I will introduce the ordinance or assign it a number and publish.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for a resolution to adopt this ordinance, assign a number and publish it. Further comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. For the public record, I did have a short letter here that was written regarding assessments, but I think the issue is a moot point at this time. It's from the Wilmer Bus Company, and it said the intent of the letter was to object to the amount of assessment to the bus barn for the Fifth Street Southeast project. That's the project that the council has now taken out of the overall project. And it says that we feel the benefit from this project is not beneficial to the amount of the assessment. Signed Kenneth Enselman. So, this, this matter is taken care of because it's no longer an issue. All right. We are down to number eight on the agenda, which is a Wilmer City Council Open Forum. Does anyone wish to address the council or the mayor in the open forum? Yes.
Hi, Chris Dunick, 3502 Eagle Ridge Drive West. I'm just going to go back just for a minute. I don't want to take too much of your time, but on this assessment thing that was just approved, one thing that I don't know if anybody understands it, because I don't understand it myself, is that there's $220,000 plus another $187,000. So, the contingency and construction staking is actually closer to $400,000, as I understand it. And, and that $400,000 being, being assessed against the developer in this is a very large sum of money. And I don't think that we understand, and what we're asking to do is to be able to work with the, with the city staff in order to work on what that contingency would be, because we believe that the risk has been reduced. And I don't know if that was stated clearly enough or not, or if everybody understood it, but it seemed to be a lot of questions about, was that value 220? And that's kind of where we landed. Well, it's not 220. As I understand it, it's closer to $400,000. And that's what was just acted upon, and so I just wanted to state that, because I don't think that that's clear, and there's so, there's so much confusion. I want, I want to have the opportunity to work with city staff on working that, working on that number, because that's a very large number that, you know, is a, is a big burden on us.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we'll be glad to sit down and visit with DBI and try to sort this out so that everybody understands exactly what's happening.
All right.
We'll be pleased to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Chris. Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council tonight? If not, we'll move on to number nine, which is a finance committee report for April 23rd. Councilmember Anderson?
Mr. Mayor, I was not at that meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I was not at that meeting, so I would ask that Vice Chair Fagerly go through the minutes, please.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one is the insurance liability coverage limits. City Clerk Halliday presented details of the current statutory tort liability limits to the extent of the coverage purchased from the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust. A decision must be made annually whether to waive or not waive the limits. If the city does not waive the statutory tort limits, an individual claimant would be able to recover no more than $300,000 on any claim to which the statutory tort limits apply. The total, which all claimants would be able to recover in a single occurrence to which the statutory tort limits apply, would be limited to $1 million. If the city waives the tort limits and purchases excess liability coverage, a single claimant could potentially recover an amount up to the limit of the coverage purchased. The total, which all claimants would be able to recover for a single occurrence to which the statutory tort limits apply, would also be limited to the amount of coverage purchased, regardless of the number of claimants. Staff was recommending not to waive the statutory tort limits at this time. There was a motion, and it was second, to make a motion stating the city would not waive the statutory tort limits. Now introduce that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that the city not waive the statutory tort limits for a liability coverage. Comment? Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Item number two was the wastewater project update. Craig Holmes of Donahue and Associates updated the committee on the status of the waste treatment project. Costs continue to be under budget for the planning phase and the design phase, with the design completion stage at 30 percent. Approximately $500,000 has been received for the fiscal year 2006. Stag grant and other direct federal appropriations continued to be requested. Clean water legacy grants have been applied for through the Minnesota PFA, including $3,205,975 for total maximum daily load reduction, and $500,000 for phosphorus reduction. The city is 100 percent eligible for a PFA revolving fund loan, which would have a maximum term of 20 years and could be subsidized by the state for two and a half points, bringing the interest rate down to approximately 2 percent. Other funding is being pursued via Minnesota capital bonding for a direct Minnesota line item appropriation. Next application for 2008 funds is due at the state in June of '07. Mr. Holmes also distributed copies of the master design schedule, and that the project is on target. The only challenge is so far is the necessary permits for Hawk Creek and easement acquisitions. He also played, displayed 30 percent design drawings and briefly reviewed the layout of the project. Item number three was the 2008 budget calendar. Staff provided the committee with the proposed 2008 budget calendar, which was briefly reviewed. It was moved and seconded and passed to approve the 2008 budget calendar as presented, and that's in the back of the packet here, so I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the 2008 budget calendar. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Item four was the 2007 B bond calendar. We just went through that. I don't think we need a motion for that.
You did that?
No. Are you sure, Mick? Is it?
The bond calendar. The sale of the calendar.
I don't believe we do. This should be okay.
All right. Item number five is Wilmer Fabrication Industrial Development Revolving Account. Finance Director Okens explained to the committee that the city received a $400,000 grant from the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development in 2006, which was loaned to Wilmer Fabrication for industrial development purposes. They are now in the process of repaying this loan to the city. During the 2008 budget process, the council will have the authority to set UCD requirements of the loan proceeds for further industrial development. And this was for information only. Item six was future agendas in Rice Hospital. It was noted that representatives from Rice Hospital will be attending the May 14th Finance Committee meeting to discuss the hospital's 2006 financial report, as well as intergovernmental transfers between the hospital and the city of Wilmer. Item seven was for information. We reviewed the different financial reports. So if there's no further questions, I'm moved to file the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file the minutes. I have a question for Craig. Going back to item number two, applying for 2008 funds is due at the state in June 2007. Who's handling that?
Okay.
I'll be starting the forms and then delivering to Mr. Schmidt.
Okay.
That'll be done.
Craig, couldn't you come up here?
I will. I've got the forms. I just got those late last week. I'll prepare the forms and deliver those to Mr. Schmidt before the 5th of June for submittal. That's for the state's capital bonding request.
And do you have any sense yet of how much we're going to ask for?
I don't believe we've worked that out yet.
Okay. And then...
$80 million.
That sounds like veto bait. What is the role, or how are you incorporating Representative Junkie and Senator Gimzy in this? How do they function as we prepare this application for bonding? What's their role then?
Well, I think that city staff will contact them when those forms are in, but before we can reach that point, we've got to get the paperwork put together. We did, we went through a similar exercise two years ago. This is done every other year. So we'll follow the same procedure. We'll get the forms in and then follow up with some phone calls.
We've been in contact with both Representative Junkie and Senator Gimzy, and they've confirmed the dates that these submissions are required, and they don't really have much to say about it at that point until the actual deliberations take place in the bonding bill next year or in the next session.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Craig. The motion is to file the minutes. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next are the minutes of the Public Works Safety Committee for April 24th. Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had one agenda item, which was the airport self-fueling discussion, but due to the fact that was just right after the plane crash, which took a couple of citizens from our community, we deferred that until one of our later meetings. The second item was in regards to the ultimate fighting, and recall that we discussed that here and at the committee previously, and this was an ordinance prohibiting ultimate fighting within the city. The city attorney had been directed to draft the ordinance, and the ordinance, which has been drafted, defines ultimate fighting in detail and prohibits the activity within the city with the penalty of a misdemeanor. And it is the committee's recommendation, and I will make the motion, Mr. Mayor, to approve the ultimate fighting ordinance as presented and introduce it for a hearing, which would be held May 21st, 2007, at 7:03 PM.
We have a motion and a second for a public hearing to be scheduled for ultimate fighting. Comments? Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Next item was in regards to the wastewater treatment plant relocation project. Craig and then Mike Gerbits from Donahue and Associates were at our meeting, and they updated the committee on the status of the funding and the plans for the new wastewater treatment plant. As the design phase, as earlier mentioned, has reached the 30 percent complete. Mr. Holmes briefed the committee on the three main funding sources and the city's eligibility in the grant and loan programs. Mr. Gerbits then presented the timeline for the construction of the new facility and a brief overview of the plant design, and he informed the committee that the facility will be designed in three phases, the 0 to 30, the 30 to 75 percent, and the 75 to 100 percent. And Donahue and Associates evaluated the cost estimate based on 30 percent complete and figures incorporated value engineering. As a result of their evaluation, cost estimates were kept within the budget. Several recently identified improvements to the initial facilities plan approved by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency now need to be addressed, and Donahue and Associates asked the committee to consider authorization to present the proposed amendment to the MPCA. The facilities plan amendment eliminates the proposed wastewater pumping station at the existing wastewater treatment plant and revises the hydraulic capacity of the secondary settling basins to a peak flow roughly to two-thirds of the peak municipal design year flow rate. This reduction of the peak flow design is made possible by the storage capabilities of our large conveyance system, the large diameter pipe that is going to be used for the interceptor. Hydraulic capacity for the remainder of the plant, which incorporates both the city and the industrial, remains unchanged from the approved facilities plan, and the committee reviewed the correspondence to the MPCA. And after discussion, Mr. Mayor, I would introduce the resolution to approve Donahue and Associates' request and authorize them to submit a letter on behalf of the city to the MPCA for an amendment to the facilities plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to authorize Donahue and Associates to send a letter to MPCA to add to the facilities plan. Further comment about this? Roll call?
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Now, we just held our assessment hearing. The next item on the agenda, on our agenda, was in regards to preparation of the assessment role and declaring the cost to be assessed. I assume we still have to do that.
For bond procedures.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution which outlines the 5380 per foot, yeah, that's still 5380 per foot, and the overlay at 1733, but then the modification of the total assessment figure. I don't have it in front of me. What did we go to?
$900,000.
Have to recalculate.
Whatever we, whatever it comes out to with the elimination of Fifth Street, right? That's the only change, right?
Seventeenth Avenue Southwest.
That's right.
We have to recalculate.
Okay.
We don't have figures tonight.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
Second.
We have a motion and a, we have a resolution, and it's been seconded, to declare cost to be assessed and order preparation of the assessment role. Comment? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to correct the motion at the meeting, I did not make the motion that states here that I did.
And I didn't second it.
So it's a mystery, huh?
I wasn't there.
Wasn't at the table.
Okay. Well...
Sure. Technicalities.
Somebody looked just like you.
I was in the audience.
Yes, you were.
All right. Thanks. We do have a motion that's been seconded on the table here. If there's no other comments, roll call?
Councilmember Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
The next item was an agreement between the city and the state of Minnesota, providing the terms for maintenance and electrical energy for the new highway lighting systems on northbound Highway 71, County State 823, and southbound on Highway 71 at Lakeland Drive. And the agreement is that the state will do all maintenance, but the city and the county will provide the electrical energy for the lights. Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution to accept the agreement and authorize the mayor and city administrator into the same agreement on behalf of the city.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to accept an agreement with the state of Minnesota regarding lighting out at the Wilmer Avenue interchange. Comment? Just a question, is this agreement for that interchange similar to agreements at other interchanges?
It's identical.
Identical.
Standard agreement.
And so the city provides the electricity and the state does the maintenance?
Yeah, basically, in this situation, the county installed them, the state provides the maintenance, and we supply the power to keep them wet.
I know this is what we, and I think you've heard me say this before, I think rural communities seem to get hit with these agreements that are very different, as I understand it, from agreements in the metro area. Because all these interchanges in the metro area are not handled by individual cities. They're not. That's what the mayors tell me down there. And yet, out in rural areas, we are paying these costs and not MINDOT. So I guess that's the nature of rural communities, but that doesn't seem to be an equitable situation around the state. All right. We have a motion, and it's been seconded for this resolution. Roll call?
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
That was all that was on our agenda, and that's the minutes, Mr. Mayor, and I will move to file them, unless somebody has a question.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file these minutes. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next are the Labor Relations Committee report of April 24th. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Labor Relations Committee met on Tuesday, April 24th. We met upon appropriate motion and second to, in closed session for the purpose of discussing contract negotiations with ASME Council Number 65, Local 559 General Unit, and also to discuss the city administrator's contract. Councilmember, let's see, the meeting was, after some discussion, reopened upon motion by Councilmember Reese and seconded by Councilmember Anderson and carried. It was then in open session, moved, seconded, and passed for the following, that the council approve a new three-year contract between the city of Wilmer and ASME Council Number 65, Local 559 General Unit, as has been the case with the bulk of our bargaining units. The contract calls for annual wage adjustments of 3 percent and a change in paid holidays, where we're exchanging Columbus Day for the day after Thanksgiving. Again, this is consistent with recent modifications to other contracts, and that the city offices and operations, with the exception of Public Works, will now be closed the day after Thanksgiving. And following discussion, it was moved, seconded, and passed, and I move the recommendation of the committee, Mr. Mayor, to approve this contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the new three-year contract between the city of Wilmer and ASME Council Number 65, Local 559 General Unit. Further comment? This is a resolution, then, Kevin, right? Simple motion?
Just a simple motion.
Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Then we moved on to the consideration of a new three-year agreement with the city administrator, and following that discussion, it was moved, seconded, and passed that the council approved, to recommend to the council, that we approve a new three-year agreement with the city administrator, including a base salary of $104,040 in 2007. This represents a wage increase and a market adjustment, and 3 percent annual adjustments in 2008 and 2009. in two thousand and eight and two thousand and nine. The contract also includes provisions for gap financing of health insurance premiums from the time of termination of employment through Medicare eligibility, which since we found was, is, in this case, age sixty-five. Again, following discussion, it was moved, seconded, and passed, and I move the recommendation of the committee to approve a new three-year agreement with the city administrator.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a motion to approve a three-year contract with our city administrator. Further comment? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item number two came out of some other discussion, noting the significant number of projects, significant projects underway. The committee revisited a concept of council work sessions, and this has come out of some suggestion at our council retreat, whereby the council would set aside time to discuss various projects in process. This surfaced again in discussions with Mr. Carl New, who was our facilitator at the council retreat back in January. And this is meant to provide a way for the council to better understand and track the progress of various city projects. Wanting to improve, implement a similar strategy for this council, it was moved, seconded, and passed for the following, that staff be directed to develop a format for council work sessions that would be topic-specific, would be informational in nature and limited in time, and generally conducted during the time slot when the Labor Relations Committee has no meeting scheduled. The roundtable discussion would be chaired by the mayor, and the first topic of discussion would be the status of library funding. That was the recommendation, and I move that recommendation of the committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to have the staff develop a format for council work sessions. Further comment about this?
Mr. Mayor, is...
Councilmember, or, Tablique?
These work sessions, is it the committee's feeling that that's for all members of the council or just a certain committee? And then, the follow-up question to that would be, how is that going to differ from a full council meeting?
The first, the first question is that it would be meant for the entire council. I think the answer to the second question is that staff needs to work out the format for us. I think one of the questions that we had had was, how does this affect us in terms of open meeting discussion? And I think that's what we're looking for, is, is a workable format so that we can implement this.
I think it need, also needs to be reiterated, Bruce, that it is topic-specific. It is not going to be multiple topics.
Councilmember Christensen? Did you want to say something? Councilmember Anderson, did you have your hand up? The, or, there it is. Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would hope the staff would use the outline, Figure Three, Arenas for Council Staff Performance that Mr. New has put together, came before we went to the leadership retreat, and it, it's very descriptive, and it compares four different arenas, and I would hope that we would follow that, Mr. Mayor.
Staff will take that into consideration. Any other questions about this? This is a motion to direct staff to develop this format. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to briefly say something kind of in conjunction with, with this and with some of the other discussion that we had. Mr. New had pointed out that, as a council and as a city, how extremely fortunate we are that we have experienced professionals on our staff, and that type of community is both, continuity is both desirable and rare. Certainly, we're going to be facing some challenges in the future as some of our senior staff members retire, and we'll need to ensure that future openings are filled by people every bit as competent and capable and committed as our current staff. I know that there are some members of the public who might see that a bit differently. I have a high regard for those folks, as I also do those staffers who they would, these other folks would have us remove. Most such opinion is, I think, duly noted and respected, but I think, however, that councils ordinarily pay little attention to out-of-town letter writers who think it is they that we should be responsive to, and I think that's certainly true of this council. I speak for myself, and I hope for the council at large, when I say to staff at all levels, that your work and dedication are highly valued by this body, and that we are most appreciative of you all. I want to thank you personally for collaborating with us, and, and on a personal level, having to put up with me sometimes as I try to learn and understand some of the issues that are, that are affecting our city. I do believe that this concept that we just approved of, issues-oriented work sessions are, is only going to enhance the working relationship between the council and staff, and in doing so, make for a more professional relationship geared to even better outcomes. And again, my thanks to you all.
Thank you, Steve.
Mr. Mayor, if there's nothing further after my little missive, I move to file the minutes of the Labor Relations Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file these minutes. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Next is a consideration of a preliminary plat called the Emerald Pond Second Edition. Bruce, would you explain that?
Mayor Heike, members of the council, Emerald Pond Second Edition is a development by Dan Kuzman, Kuzman Construction. This is a very simple replat in that Mr. Kuzman simply proposes taking five lots from the original Emerald Pond's addition and replating them into four lots. He is experiencing greater demand for larger-sized units and wishes to reduce crowding in the plat. Most of the issues were identified on the original plat, and the main issue that's being dealt with now and that the developer does understand is that any utility changes will be, those costs will be borne by the developer. With that being said, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat.
Thank you, Bruce.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this preliminary plat called Emerald Pond Second Edition. Comment? Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, I'm assuming that item number three, that we approved under the planning commission, outlines what you just said with respect to this. Is that correct? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Next is a consideration of an ordinance to rezone certain lands from one, or I two to...
I one.
I one? Is that what that is?
Yes.
Okay. Bruce, explain?
Mayor Heike, members of the council, this ordinance would rezone the properties on the east side of Highway forty from Highway twelve down to the Wilmer Pet Hospital. It's action that's being proposed and taken by the planning commission in response to the issues that arose last year regarding the salvage yard out on Highway forty, and it caused a planning commission to reexamine the type of industrial uses that would be allowed along that corridor. So, the proposal would make that Highway forty corridor consistent with the industrial park zone and classification, which is I one.
Thank you, Bruce.
There will be no change to any uses that currently exist, so it's recommendation of staff that the ordinance be introduced for a hearing.
All right, thanks.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance for, or, not to approve, to have a public hearing for this ordinance on May twenty-first. Further comment? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Next is a consideration of an ordinance, to amend an ordinance, ten sixty, Section six-point, L point two, and Section six-point M. Bruce?
Mayor Heike, members of the council, this too is an action that's been initiated by the planning commission, and it would amend the current zoning ordinance to allow agricultural product processing in the I-one district, which is limited industry, and within the I-two general industry district, to change automobile salvage and reduction yards from a permitted use with plan review to a conditional use that would force those types of uses to go through a public hearing process as well. Staff recommends, again, that the council introduce this ordinance for a hearing on May twenty-first.
Thank you.
So move.
We have a motion and a second to introduce this ordinance at a public hearing on May twenty-first. Comment? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. We are down to miscellaneous, and we have something here about an interceptor project change order. Craig, can you explain for us?
Mayor Heike, members of the council, we have need to extend the interceptors sewer that we built last summer by about sixty-five feet north of Nineteenth Avenue Southeast, so that the paving work that's underway in Nineteenth Avenue can be completed and that intersection is cleared. The most efficient way to extend that sewer, that sixty-five feet, is to change order it to the construction contract currently held by S.J. Lewis Construction. So, we prepared a contract change order in the amount of twenty-six thousand forty-eight dollars. That includes a mobilization, the excavation of the sewer, extending it and closing the excavation back up to, to clear that intersection, so the paving work that's immediately needed on Nineteenth Avenue can be completed by June. So, what we need is authorization to issue that contract change order in the amount of twenty-six thousand forty-eight dollars, bringing the total of S.J. Lewis's construction contract to six-hundred thousand, six-hundred thirty-two dollars.
Thank you, Craig. Council?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve a change order in the amount of twenty-six thousand forty-eight dollars, which then adjusts the budget for J.L. Lewis to six-hundred thousand, six-hundred thirty-two dollars. Further comment about this? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Craig, what, what caused this, or Mel, why do we have to do this, or why wasn't it planned that we would do that? Is it, is something to do with Fifth Street?
Yes, exactly. By removing Fifth, we had, we still have to extend this interceptor line in order to accommodate the work on Nineteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I just, I just got a question, and I was going to ask it later on, but I'll ask it now. The, the building of Fifth Street and whatever underground utilities that would be not on mall property, that would be on the Gesh property, why wouldn't we just finish that?
The three-hundred-and-thirty feet of Gesh property at the south end? We discussed the pros and cons of doing that this afternoon, and in our opinion, it was going to be somewhat difficult just doing that three-hundred-and-thirty feet, given the circumstances that exist. We have a, we have a private agreement between the property owner and a contractor, and just the difficulty of, contractor indicated he wasn't interested in doing that work if Fifth Street wasn't going to be a complete run. So, it would have been a little difficult to coordinate that, and we thought it would be easiest to leave that three-hundred-and-thirty feet and incorporate it into the entire section.
The ingress egress next to the Dollar Store, is that going to be maintained? It will be.
Yes.
It would have been nice to be able to get that completed so that the semaphores would be fully functional. I guess that's what I was looking at.
Well, we share your, your thoughts.
I just, I just think it's really, really a shame that Fifth Street is not going to be completed, and I, you know, I voiced my opinion on that right at the beginning, and I think that's, that's, that's going to be a big relief for traffic and traffic flow, and it's just unfortunate that that's not going to be completed.
All right, we have a motion, and it's been seconded for this change order. Roll call?
Councilmember Tablique?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. I have a little bit of business here to take care of. The city of Wilmer is considered a tree city, which is, which means that the city meets certain criteria on an annual basis, and part of the criteria includes having a, a tree care ordinance, which is in place. We also have an annual budget where the city spends two dollars per capita on trees and shrubs, so that means we spend upwards of forty thousand dollars a year. We have an Arbor Day observance and proclamation, and then we have a tree board, which is actually the city council itself. And just this past week, we had our annual Arbor Day ceremony in Gesh Park, and I want to thank Mrs. Heitzman, Heitzman, and her students, who came over from Lincoln School, and they were Johnny on the spot, they were very eager to participate. We had a beautiful sunny day. The whole ceremony took about, you know, less than an hour, and Jerry Gesh and his sister, Lorraine, were there, representing the family. And our city Public Works Department, Mel Odens, our city engineer, organized everything, and it went very smoothly. And the proclamation that was read there needs to be read here at an official meeting, and so I'll take a moment to do that. Whereas trees offer environmental benefits, conservation, and other additions to Wilmer's quality of life, that although not accessible in monetary terms, have a direct impact on citizens' lives, and whereas future generations are dependent upon our continued planting of trees and shrubs, and whereas the city of Wilmer is desirous of encouraging all residents to be involved in planting and the care of trees and shrubs, be it resolved that I, Les Heike, the mayor of the city of Wilmer, proclaim the month of May two thousand and seven as Arbor Month in Wilmer, Minnesota, and urge all of our citizens to recognize and take cognizance of this event. So, that makes it official. The city recognizes the, the good work of our Public Works Department for caring for our trees. And just for your information, each year, the city has to take down somewhere in the average of about three-hundred-and-fifty trees a year due to damage or disease or, or breaking of limbs, but at the same time, the city and the utilities plant an average of nine-hundred trees a year all over the city. So, we try to stay ahead of the, the problems with our trees and shrubs by an aggressive planting program, which creates the beauty of our parks and avenues and streets. Thanks to Mel and the Public Works Department. I have a couple of announcements here, and then I want to talk just for a moment about the Housing Task Force. First announcement is that there is a community-oriented policing and problem-solving meeting for Ward One, which is Tuesday, May fifteenth, at the Wilmer Senior Citizen Center. Again, Ward One, cops meeting Tuesday, May fifteenth. Bruce Peterson, Planner, Planning and Development Services Director, will talk about the exterior storage and minimum maintenance ordinances and violations and the Housing Task Force. We have an announcement here from Roosevelt Elementary School, that Dare will have their graduation on Friday, May eleventh, at twelve forty in the Roosevelt Elementary School gym. Councilmembers, staff, and public are certainly invited to that. Dare graduation, Friday, May eleventh, twelve forty P.M. at the Roosevelt Elementary School gym. I wanted to announce that there is going to be a community forum scheduled for Monday, May fourteenth, that's next week. On immigration, not a black and white issue is the topic. It'll be held at the Wilmer Education and Arts Center from six to eight P.M. The public is invited. The special guest speaker is Dr. Donna Gabachio, Gabachia, professor and director of the University of Minnesota's Immigration History Center. She'll put in U.S. immigration history in a global and a comparative perspective. She'll put in U.S. immigration history in a global and a comparative perspective. Monday, May 14th, 6 to 8 PM at the Wilmer Education and Arts Center. There's another event coming up that I think has, hopefully will have interest in our community and that's that the Wilmer Area Community Foundation and the Bremer Foundation and the Southwest Initiative Foundation are co-sponsoring a grant writing seminar at the Wilmer Library on Wednesday, May 16th. And this will take place from 9 AM to 4 PM. 9 AM to 4 PM at the Wilmer Public Library in the multipurpose room upstairs. And I wanted to especially notify the public about this because we do have a grantsmanship center at the library so that individuals or agencies or churches or schools and the staff of those groups who want to research grant writing and resources for grants should use not only the grantsmanship center at the library, but I would encourage you to come to this workshop. That'll be held right at the library and they'll show all the resources. The registration is $39 if you register before May 10th. After that, it's $49. So at the library on May 16th. We received a letter, or it's addressed to myself, the Wilmer City Council and the Candy Island County Commissioners. I want to read this into the public record. This was received by certified mail. Did you receive this or did it just come to me?
All the council members.
You already have it? All right, then I won't read that. Then I want to go to the housing task force. The council at its retreat last winter wanted to establish a review of our housing ordinances and housing issues in the city of Wilmer and voted to establish a housing task force. We've gathered a selection of names. I have here 18 names. A couple of more members could be added if council members wish to add anyone else, but I'll read the names that have been submitted by council members and if I miss somebody, please indicate that. And then I want to have just a short discussion on what the council's expectations are of this housing task force. So these are the members that have been submitted to me. Susie Martinez, Shirley Jensen, Steve Omen, former city council member, John Bjornberg, former chair of the city planning commission, I believe, Shelley Cash, a realtor, Harold McAdams, Jolene Hovland and Luz Jimenez from Heartland Community Action Agency, Fred Codjolo, local artist, woodcarver, Eileen Huberty, Kevin Marty, Ivan Sordahl, Rebecca Trongard, who was recommended by the Chamber of Commerce, Maria Diaz from HRA, and then Cindy Johnny, what's Johnny's last name?
Lindgren. Lindgren.
Lindgren. Johnny Lindgren. And then three council members have asked to be on this committee and I've said that would be fine, Cindy Swenson, Jim Dawkins and Steve Gardner. I've asked that somebody from the planning and development department provide staffing for this committee and I'll, I'll leave that in Mick's hands to figure that out. These will be public meetings and they're likely to be held at the fire hall probably and these individuals will receive letters announcing this. Now, did I miss anybody that anybody has recommended here? Did I catch everybody? Okay. And if you come up with somebody yet, you know, we can still add them on, so. Now, what is the expectation that the council members have, you know, what do they want this housing task force to accomplish? You know, when they're done, what's, what is it that they're going to come back to the council for? Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess since this was one of those issues that, that I tended to want to focus on a little bit this year, I can take a stab at that. My personal expectation is that, you know, we have some issues regarding not just necessarily rental housing, but housing that is in danger of becoming blighted. We don't want neighborhoods to become blighted because then you have all sorts of other problems and I think Mr. New at our retreat drove that point home quite, quite eloquently. My personal expectation of this task force would be that we look at ways to hold all parties accountable, not just tenants, not just landlords, not just staff or even council members, but to have everybody come together collaboratively and look at some type of change that's both reasonable and achievable. To be able to, to be able to address some of the concerns that some of the folks, I know Jim has folks in his ward that, that have raised quite a number of concerns and I've, I've heard it from other folks in our, in our ward as well. I don't think it's necessarily neighborhood-specific, I think it's a city issue. And I want us to be able to put some of these heads together and get some ideas and give us some recommendations that we can work, work with. That would certainly have been my, my expectation.
Cindy, do you want to, what are your expectations?
I'll just add, well, I will just add to it, one thing we've been visiting about at community development has been educating people. I know just recently I've been reminded when I bought, when I was a first-time homeowner, there were just a lot of things that I didn't realize that a lot of people take for granted. So it's also helping to pull together a way to educate people that are new to the community or just a first-time homeowner themselves or even renters, what the expectations of our community might be.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you read about 18 names?
Yeah.
I would hope that at the first meeting, that the 18 individuals that have volunteered to be part of this would be asked, what do you think? What are your issues? And then bring those back to us, you know. I think, I know the two people that I gave you the names for, they have a list of things that they're concerned about and they're going to be on our task force and so I would hope that we would early on ask them for what their thoughts are.
Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the inside cover of your packet, council packet, it recommends, it's been in there every week, it says that this task force should review the current housing standards and make recommendations to the council for any changes required to policies and enforcement codes. I believe we agreed upon that at our retreat.
Anyone else? Rick, anything that you want to add?
I just agree with, with Cindy, we need to educate the people, not only people just moving here, but people that want to be landlords, absentee landlords, because the ones buying these repo homes are people from out of the area and all they do is, you know, put some paint on the structure and have people move in. We can't have that anymore. You know, we don't want people to be changing oil on the street from their car and we don't want them parking on the lawn, so we need to educate them, so.
Anything else?
Let's see, Mr. Mayor, you know, we've discussed a number of these issues in the community development committee and, and mainly dealing with some of the exterior maintenance issues, I think we need to answer some questions as far as policies and what the city policy should be with some of those issues as well. So, and hopefully the committee can bring back some recommendations for us to, to deal with those issues.
Bruce, do you have any immediate thoughts about where you, how you want the, the committee to kick in?
Well, I agree with Councilman Christensen that I, when I've looked at this all along, I've pretty much taken it off the council's song page and what came out of the retreat. I think the expectations that have been stated by the council people are very reasonable and I, I, again, I think it will start with not just reiterating the council's expectations, but asking the task force members what they expect, you know, get a picture of the community that they want to see, that they want to live in and be a part of and then we'll, we'll find some solutions from that.
Good. Is the council satisfied with this, with the names that I read off? Do you think we have sufficient representation from around the community? I was just concerned that we had somebody here like landlords and I think we do have one here, two, but anybody else? All right, then I would ask the council to accept this. Jim?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Did we not indicate that the city attorney was going to be a part of this group also?
Well, I don't think he'll be there on, on an every meeting basis, but he would certainly be considered as a resource to the committee. You know, I think that's something that as the, as the agenda is defined, you know, if he needs to provide some legal advice, you know, I think we can ask him to do that.
Okay.
But I wouldn't expect him to be there at every meeting.
Okay.
All right. Can I give this to the council? You accept this then and we can move forward? No objections? All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, why don't you use a motion to appoint that membership to a task force?
All right. So make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this list for the housing task force and appoint it on behalf of the city council and the mayor's office. Those, any comments? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Council committee meeting dates, finance?
Finance will meet Monday, the 14th at 4:45. I've asked that we have a short agenda so that we're done by 5:45 so we can go to the community forum at 6 o'clock.
City finance, May 14th, 4:45. Public Works, Public Safety?
Tuesday, the 15th at 4:45 and this meeting will be held at the fire station training room because the county will be there. Is that going to be a separate session, Mr. Odens?
They would like to use an agenda.
It's going to be part of the work.
They would like to have it as part of the Public Works informational meeting.
In regards to extension of County Road 5?
Correct.
Public Works, Public Safety, Tuesday, May 15th, 4:45 at the fire station in the training room. Community Development?
Community Development will meet May 17th, 4:45. That is a Thursday.
Community Development, Thursday, May 17th, 4:45. Labor?
Mr. Mayor, Labor Committee will meet on Wednesday, May 16th at 4:45.
Labor, May 16th, Wednesday, 4:45. Does the council have anything else to come before them tonight? Any other announcements? If not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn and it's been seconded. We are adjourned.